I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for December nineteenth, seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Invite you to stand as you choose while Commissioner Paragon introduces our invocation and pledge allegiance.
I'd like to introduce the Williams family, Mr. Rick Williams, and Hunter in Easton. Where's Hunter in Easton? Come on up there with your papa. And, uh, uh, former Commissioner Rick Williams is going to say our, our invocation, and, um, Hunter in Easton are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
It's my honor and privilege, and I invite you to join with me in prayer. Our blessed, loving, and almighty heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of this life. We thank you for allowing us to live in this wonderful city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and we'd ask that you would continue to favor us with the blessings on it. We'd also ask this evening that you be with all those who are separated from their families, whether that be in service to our country or in service to us here in this community. Be with those that provide that service, keep them safe. Be with all of us as we go through this Christmas season and help us to remember the reason for the season. Bless our leaders, be with them as they consider the things that are brought before them this evening and in the future, and may they act on it in a way that would be pleasing unto thee and bring honor and glory to thine holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Commissioner Beasley Brown. Here. Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Uh, I suppose those of you who are watching might have a question about why we're dressed a little bit differently. I'm violating one of the three cardinal rules in politics, wearing funny clothes in public. But, uh, we have an opportunity to recognize a company and a family who have committed so much to Bowling Green and, uh, have completed our project downtown in the eight and nine-hundred block of State Street, the eight and nine-hundred block of College, the four-hundred block of Park, four-hundred block of Main Street, and Fountain Square. So I'd like to invite Cole Murphy of Scott &amp; Murphy to come up, and, uh, Murph got us these hats making downtown BG great again, so we appreciate that.
They all look really good. Uh, we just want to thank you for, uh, allowing us and trusting us with, uh, the downtown on behalf of my family and our company. Uh, we take it, it's very seriously. It's, it's one of our prized possessions of this town, and, uh, of course, I'm the fourth generation of our family to do it. We take so much pride in it and hope we did a great job for y'all, hope everyone likes it, and enjoy it in the future.
Thank you, and I understand that your, your great-grandfather was involved in helping pave roads downtown. Your grandfather, uh, carved out the, the, at that time, I think, their limestone curb, curbing, and then forty years ago, Murph actually did some redesign and development of the square, and it's your generation's turn this time, so we appreciate that.
Hope it holds up just as long, or even longer.
I know it was a lot of trouble because you have a hundred-year-old infrastructure to deal with underneath the ground that you may or may not know about, and, and I think it turned out great, so thank you for-
Many asleepless night, but, uh, it worked out well.
Couldn't have looked better on downtown lights up. It was beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Great job.
With any other awards or recognitions tonight? You have any comments, Mr. Mizel? All right. Approval of the minutes for our regular meeting on December third, two thousand nineteen.
I'll move.
I can.
Motion by Paragon, second by Beasley Brown. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand nineteen to sixteen.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Courtney Howell to the position of Senior Office Associate in the Public Works Department.
I'll move.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Ms. Mizel.
As you know, we have a career path advancement program for, uh, our office worker positions, and I'd like to ask Greg Meredith to come up and make his recommendation, uh, for this promotion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Mizel. I'm here today to recommend, um, that Ms. Courtney Howell be promoted to Senior Office Associate. Uh, Courtney, if you would, please stand, so everybody can see. Uh, she's been employed with the Public Works Department since October of two thousand fifteen, and she exceeds the experience and the competency requirements for this new position. Courtney is prompt to work, she's always willing to take on new tasks and responsibilities. In fact, I don't think she's ever met a workplace challenge that she couldn't overcome with her reasoned determination and thoughtful planning. On top of her regularly assigned duties, she provides after-hour coverage for our public information office and assists generally in a, in a pretty significant way in virtually every city-sponsored event that we have. Courtney's been married, your husband Mark, for eleven years. Together, they have a ten-year-old son, Levi. She's a lifelong resident of Bowling Green and Warren County, and she enjoys spending time outdoors. Courtney is a key member of our Public Works team and worthy of this promotion to Senior Office Associate. Thank you, and I'd answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Meredith, isn't this the lovely lady that I had asked sometime back that her picture be installed on the wall in, uh, in, in your department?
As the employee of the corner.
I, I think, I think you're right, it is.
Picture is there?
Uh, she's got a picture there. I don't know if that one's up, Courtney, is it? Have you allowed it to go up yet?
Not yet.
She's holding out on us, Joe, we'll have to work on that.
I have a good memory.
We'll make sure to get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations. Municipal order two thousand nineteen to seventeen.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Joshua Atkins, Nicholas Atkins, Daniel Cross, Dylan Hawkins, Nicholas Lorenzo, Mason Michael, Michael Miller, Alexander Parkinson, Brett Pitchford, Brittany Rich, and Adrian Tudor to the position of firefighter in the fire department.
I'll move.
By Nash, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
Currently have seven vacancies at the fire department, and we have, uh, we're anticipating four retirements coming up, and so we have this before you tonight. I'd like to ask Erin Holesy, our HR Director, to kind of give you a overview of the, of the process and introduce to you these candidates.
Right, we had a really fantastic recruiting cycle this year, and, um, as in years past, we had a really good problem where we had just, um, an incredible amount of people apply, and, and many that were, were very qualified. It, it was very challenging for the interview committee to go through this process, and, but we are very excited about the eleven that we have selected to join the Bowling Green Fire Department. Um, we had two hundred and sixteen individuals apply for the position, and this started back at the beginning of July, um, and we had a hundred and seventeen show up for, um, the, the testing that we conducted. Um, we reviewed and sent a hundred and one of those applicants over to the fire department for their review, and they selected eighty-two to go through an initial interview process, and then we did a long interview with forty-three individuals, um, and finally, we, we took that down to about twenty-seven, and we had them all go through, um, the psychological and the polygraph section, and then we had the very difficult task of taking it down to the eleven. Um, but if you all could stand as I call your name, these are our recommendations for, um, appointment for firefighter for, um, this next coming year. Joshua Atkins, Nicholas Atkins, Daniel Cross, Dylan Hawkins, Nicholas Lorenzo, Mason Michael, Michael Miller, Alexander Parkinson, Brett Pitchford, Brittany Rich, and Adrian Tudor. Let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Congratulations.
If none, please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Congratulations, guys. Dylan, you got away without Joe messing with you, so congratulations. Oh, he's ratting you out. Young lead, if you want to, before he gets to you. Municipal order two thousand nineteen to eighteen.
Homeless, homeless.
I tried, Dylan, I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, you stand up.
Joe, I might can call you out of order because we're out of this one, aren't we?
No, no, we're going back. How, how did I miss that?
I don't know, I think you were worried about Courtney's picture, I guess, I don't know.
We've already snapped the ball on the next place, we've got to move on, so.
No, we're not. I'm a City Commissioner, we can tell you wrong what you want. Do I, uh, do I know your family?
I think so.
What kind of work does your dad do if he works?
He doesn't tell.
That's because he doesn't do anything, that's the reason, I know. We're glad to have all of you, glad to have you. Uh, you come from good stock, and, uh, I know that, and I mean that when I say it. We're glad to have you. Glad he takes after his mother.
Municipal order two thousand nineteen to eighteen.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Elise Yonker to the position of Executive Assistant in the Fire Department.
I'll move.
I can.
Motion by Paragon, second by Beasley Brown.
This is the night of appoint, appointment, so bear with us. Uh, I'm going to turn this one over to Erin Holesy, our HR Director, again. Erin?
All right, um, I would like to recommend that we appoint Elise Yonker to the position of Executive Assistant in the Fire Department. This is a new position. Um, we've been discussing this position for about a year now, and, um, we felt that it was a good time to bring it in. Um, after spending a lot of time with both the Police Department and the Fire Department, um, it was definitely determined that this was, um, a much-needed support for the fire administration, um, team, and so, um, we went out and spread the net as far as we could. Um, this person is going to be working very closely with the fire chief and the deputy chiefs, um, to allot in their accreditation programs and also to create a lot of consistency, um, especially when we do have some turnover in the assistant chief and deputy chief positions. This is going to, to bring a lot of continuity to the operation of that department. Um, we had an astounding two hundred and fifteen applications for this position, and we went through several processes. We, we used some testing in order to, um, look at, look at different skills, particularly in, um, Excel, um, being able to, to look at different, um, spreadsheets and, and analysis that is going to be really important to the Fire Department. We selected ten to be interviewed. Um, Elise Yonker has been selected. Elise, if you would like to stand, please. Um, Elise has worked for the Kentucky State Police Drug Enforcement Special Investigations Unit as a program coordinator for six years. She's demonstrated that she possesses, possesses experienced skills and abilities to meet the expectations of the position. She has a bachelor's degree in communications from Grand Valley State University, and she is going to be a huge asset to the department. Please let me know if you have any questions.
I'll answer your questions. Hold on.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations. And before the fire department leaves, I just wanted to call attention to the public that Jason Coulson's picture is in the Finley Fire Equipment, uh, calendar for two thousand twenty, I guess it is, twenty-one, twenty. Uh, and they put some pictures of some black fire truck up there, I don't know where that came from, but, but Jason's here, and he was kind enough to autograph it for me. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Municipal order two thousand nineteen nineteen.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of William Salzman to the position of Landscape Gardener in the Golf Division in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Nash, second by Denning, Mr. Mizel.
And we've got another opening in Parks, I'll let Erin, uh, take the reins on this one as well. Erin?
This position is open due to a resignation. Uh, the Landscape Gardener is specifically going to be working in the Golf Division, uh, making sure that all of our golf courses stay particularly beautiful. Uh, we had twenty-three applications, and eight were interviewed. Uh, the interview panel consisted of Brent Belcher, Mike Mitchum, Gabe Nealon, Kim Ives, and/or Tiger Tulley. We have elected William Salzman to fill the position. Um, William hopefully is standing somewhere in the back there.
He's in the very back corner. He's got the shit cap.
Maybe he could wave.
Getting run over by the crowd on the way out the door there.
Uh, this is one of the appointments that I really appreciate because William has been working with us since, since September in a part-time capacity, um, in the Parks and Rec Maintenance Division, and he also brings additional skills from previous work experience in, um, maintenance at an apartment complex and also a specialty concrete company. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Back there.
Wait and give him his due.
There he is, now we can see him. Hey, William, thanks for coming out tonight. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations. I wanted to free up some space so we could actually see you back there. Thanks for sticking around. Next is municipal order two thousand nineteen to twenty.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Jeffrey Jordan to the position of Community Center Coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department.
I'll move.
Motion by Nash, second by Beasley Brown.
Again, due to resignation, uh, we've got this, uh, position in Parks, uh, at the community center. Erin, uh, will introduce this one.
All right, the Community Center Coordinator is an entry-level position, essential to part of the team that provides recreational opportunities to the citizens of Bowling Green. Um, we received forty-two applications, and we interviewed eight. Um, Jeffrey Jordan, if you could stand, please. Um, he has worked for us before, um, on a seasonal basis in the summer of two thousand eighteen. Currently, he works at Living Hope Baptist Church at the Recreational Center. Uh, he has exhibited innate ability to relate with the youth and exuberance to serve and mentor. He has volunteered with the Housing Authority of Bowling Green and is a proud recipient of the two thousand sixteen Jefferson Award. Um, please let me know if you have any questions about Jeffrey Jordan.
Questions? I've known Mr. Jordan for a little while, and I'm excited that he's coming on full-time and brought his lovely wife and daughter with him as well. Thank you for coming here tonight. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations. Municipal order two thousand nineteen to twenty-one.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Stephen Epley to the position of System Analyst in the Information Technology Department.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning, Mr. Mizel.
Recall, we discussed, uh, some reorganization in the IT Department months ago with the retirement of Bruce Logan. Uh, tonight, we are bringing to you an applicant for the System Analyst position, and I'll let Erin introduce this one as well.
Well, we foolishly thought that, um, replacing Bruce Logan would be simple, and, um, it was not, so we have gone a couple of rounds back to, um, you know, put the nets out a little bit further to make sure that we were finding the right candidate to, to fill into the ID Department as the Systems Analyst. Um, so we did two recruitment cycles. We wanted to make sure that with a small department, we were really getting someone who not only had the correct skill set, but was also going to be just, um, a, a good mesh with, with the department. They work very closely together. Um, so total, we did receive fifty-nine applications through those two cycles, and, um, ten applicants were interviewed, um, through all of the different panels. It consisted of Lynn Hartley, Danita Weeks, Brad Stidson, myself, and Tiger Tulley. Um, we have selected Stephen Epley. Stephen, if you would like to stand, please. Um, Stephen, um, just recently graduated, um, from Sky CTC with an associate's degree in computer information technology. He has several certifications and experience that are going to be specifically relevant to the position that we have open, and, um, we are not settling for Stephen. Um, the team knew pretty much once they interviewed him, um, they kind of wanted to offer on the spot, so we're, we're very excited to have him as part of the team.
All right, any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Congratulations, Stephen. And municipal order two thousand nineteen to twenty-two.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Ashley Patterson to the position of GIS Technician in the Public Works Department.
I'll move.
I can.
Motion by Paragon, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This, uh, position of GIS Technician was approved a, as a new position in the, the budget that you all approved back in, uh, in June, and we've been working and looking on this one too, and I'm going to let Erin, uh, take over with the, uh, recommendation on this one.
This position was also a slightly challenging position to fill. It's a very specific skill set that we were looking for, and, um, this person's going to be working very closely with Kyle Bearden to really enhance the, our GIS capabilities that we have available to the city, so, um, we, we searched far and wide. We also did, um, two full searches for this position. A total of twenty-four applications were reviewed, and six applicants were interviewed by Greg Meredith, Kyle Bearden, and Tiger Tulley, and we have selected Ashley Patterson, if you would like to stand, Ashley. Um, Ashley did just finish her bachelor's degree in GIS from the University of Louisville. She has had, um, several different internship opportunities, the Olmsted Parks Conservancy as a geographic information specialist, and she also volunteers with the Big Bat Cave LIDAR Project as a geospatial analyst. So, please let me know if you have any questions about Ashley. And that's my last one for tonight.
Can I ask, is the Big Bat Cave where Big Brent resides? Is that where it is?
Technical foul.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, I'm sorry that you're last in line, but congratulations. Municipal order two thousand, two nineteen, excuse me, two thousand nineteen to twenty-three.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand twenty-fourteen for structural firefighting turnout gear from Finley Fire- turnout gear from Findlay Fire Equipment Company Incorporated, doing business as Bluegrass Fire Equipment of McConnelsville, Ohio, in a total amount of $57,870.
Moved. Second.
By Beasley Brown, second, by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
The fire department is in need of purchasing some additional turnout gear. It's been published that there is a high risk of cancer with the, when there is only one set of turnout gear and it doesn't get cleaned properly, and they turn, they put it back on, and they're exposed to smoke, gases, and all these other byproducts from a previous fire. So, tonight, the fire department's gone out for bid for 30 sets of turnout gear, and this all comes out of the Fire Improvement Fund. It's not general fund, but they got two proposals, one from Findlay Fire, one from 911 Fleet and Fire Equipment. This was an evaluated bid, so what happened was the vendors gave the fire department committee, it's in your memo there, the makeup of the committee, several members of the fire department, they gave them sets of gear to try out, kind of test drive, as you would say. And so, the committee evaluated those based on price, compliance with the bid specs, and performance. And in your packet, you have all of the point award numbers. And in the end, Findlay Fire came out on top based on those three criteria, price, bid specs, and performance evaluation. We did get three proposals. The third one was deemed to be non-responsive, and so we were down to the two between Findlay and 911, and we are recommending Findlay Fire at a total cost of $57,870, again, to be purchased from, by the Fire Improvement Fund. Chief Colson is back, and as well as Deputy Chief Morrow, if you have any questions on this item.
Comment your questions.
Just one. The company that we have listed as non-responsive, they submitted a bid. What do we mean, non-responsive?
Addendum, which was a question that the, one of the vendors had, and they're required to submit that addendum with their package, and they didn't put it in, so they were deemed non-responsive.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question. I'm really grateful you all are making this investment. I know Chief Colson and I have had several conversations about this, and I know that this is a risk that our firefighters do take, and that we have lost some of our firefighters due to this risk of being exposed to these chemicals. Can you talk a little bit more about sort of the risks that you all face as firefighters at a fire, and how this particular gear helps protect you from possibly being exposed to that?
Yeah, it's a little different. When I started 24 years ago, when we had a structure fire, you were dealing with wood products and man-made or natural fibers. Now, with all the man-made products and plastics, when it burns, it creates a volatile gas, which has a lot of toxins, and basically, it's a hazardous material atmosphere that we have to enter to put the fire out. So, what we've tried to do, and that's part of what the turnout gear is allowing us to do, is to actually, we can wear one set of gear, make entry into structure fire, come out. The crew that went inside, we get them out of that gear as soon as we can. We have some carcinogen wipes that they can use to wipe off their skin. They also have brushes, and we have hose attachments where they can hook up and kind of do a quick decon there at the scene. And then, they can remove that gear, put it into bags, take it back to the station, wash that set of gear, change it to a clean set of gear that's waiting at the station for them to put on. Excuse me. We also have turnout gear, we call it extractor. It's a specially-made washer for turnout gear that is used to get a lot of the contaminants out of the gear that a regular washing machine would miss. And then, we have hose dryers, which we can put the turnout gear into and dries the gear much faster than when we used to air dry them. We also have recently purchased every member of carcinogen blocking hood, and it protects the, around the facial area, where in the past, it's been shown you have a lot of absorption of those toxins that get through the old nomex hoods we used to have. Excuse me. And so, that's protecting that facial area and trying to take care of that. And we're trying to keep up with technologies that advances, and they're coming out with new types of turnout gear. Unfortunately, a lot of them now are like putting a trash bag or plastic bag on, and it's not very feasible to fight fire in them. But we're trying to keep up with technology, and as new things arrive that we think would help, we're, we definitely plan on adding it to our inventory.
Thank you so much.
Just like to make one more comment, reminder that our Fire Improvement Fund is funded by insurance premium taxes that people pay on insurance policies, and that's our lifeblood for our fire department that keeps, give a revenue stream to them to buy the trucks, this type of equipment. And it's a very critical fund in funding this operation, which is, it's an expensive operation. So, that's the source of funds for this kind of purchase, and it's been a good program for years and years. I think it started back in the 70s, so we earmarked that, or dedicated those insurance premium taxes to this fund, so just want to remind the public of that.
Mr. Charles Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Late Commissioner started that. It was his idea, and we're living off of that today.
Comment your questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-224.
Municipal Order approving actions of the city manager in accepting an emergency purchase for radio system cabling and line equipment, and further approving tower crew labor costs through a sole source with mobile communication service of Bowling Green Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in a total amount of $56,767.50, with the city responsible for 50% of the costs.
Al moved.
Paragon, second, by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
Just a little bit of background. Several years ago, we, and the county, invested in a new 911 tower system. We were down to one tower, and if that one tower went down, we would be dead in the water as far as our 800 radio communications. So, we went with Motorola. We constructed a, I think it's, is it five towers? Four towers, Jason? Four towers all over the county to give us really good coverage. There is one tower that we're talking about tonight. This is in Smith Grove, and it's owned by WNKY that we use for our 800 radio equipment. They are needing to replace that tower and put up a new tower to meet some specs, I think. And so, we are going to have to move our equipment from the old tower onto the new tower. And this here before you is an agreement with Mobile Communications. We have to use an authorized dealer of Motorola equipment, and they are our authorized dealer. And so, they have given us a price. They gave us a discount. It was originally 66,765. They gave us a discount and discounted that down, took some off the installation and other labor cost, and got it, we got it down to $56,767. Chief Colson is the chairman of that joint board with the county, the Warren County Radio Agency, and he is here to answer any questions you might have.
Comment your questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-225.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 202029 for Crosswinds Golf Course Bunker Improvement Project Phase One from Parlane Outdoor Solutions of Alveton, Kentucky, in the amount of $182,400.
Moved. Second.
Nash, second, by Paragon, Mr. Fibo. Excuse me, Mr. Mizel, sorry.
Wow.
I'm old, I know.
Okay. In your FY20 budget, we had some money allotted for some bunker repairs at Crosswinds Golf Course. We went out for bid, got four bids. Lowest bid came in from Parlane Outdoor Solutions. They're going to come in and totally redo 17 bunkers at Crosswinds Golf Course. Our existing bunkers are close to 30 years old. They have a life, much like greens at a golf course. Our current bunkers are not draining properly, so every time it rains, we've got water standing in the bunkers. And so, after so long, you have to totally replace. So, this figure includes all the removal of the existing bunkers all the way down to the bottom, and replacing all of the drainage systems that are involved with that, new sand, new sod around them, a complete lock and key job for $182,000. This will replace roughly 17 bunkers that are approximately 32,000 square feet in size. I think Brent and the golf division are working out some plans for the future of possibly removing some bunkers in places to reduce the number of bunkers that we may have to replace going forward to cut costs. So, we're doing the best we can, but these are bunkers that are in much need of replacement to maintain the quality of that course. Nobody likes to play a course with bunkers that are either no sand or standing water in them. It's just part of the game. So, these should last another 20, 25, 30 years once they're replaced. So, if you have any questions, Brent Belcher is here.
Just one. How are our lakes, are we still holding water or leaking, or what?
Our lakes have been very consistent in what they're doing so far. We're very pleased with what's happening with our lakes. Of course, we know the lakes are really a neighborhood drainage. They hold all the neighborhood drainage water, so obviously, the thing that you have to realize is they hold a lot of trash. So, that's kind of the variable with the lakes, is they actually accept a lot of trash along with the drain. So, that is the thing that kind of ebbs and flows, right? It's not just a pond, but yeah, we've been very pleased with our result of the lakes.
Brent, can you tell me what the base of the bunkers are going to be, of the three option of a natural or with a liner or with?
This is the Billy bunker system, so this is going to have some rock associated with it as well. So, this is actually an improvement on the past what we had. This is, and since the 90s, when the course was developed, it didn't have the Billy bunker system. That's, so it's relatively, I won't, it's not going to say a new innovation, but it's new for bunker repairs. So, this would, that's what this will be. This will be a Billy bunker system. So, it'll actually drain better than what we've ever had there before, and so it'll do a much better job than we have now, obviously.
And with regards to what the city manager said of the removal of some of the bunkers, are you talking about total removal, or are you talking about maybe making waste bunkers where they don't have the amount of upkeep, but the challenge is still there?
Might be both, to be hon, we haven't come to that ultimate decision yet, but we have a total of 41 bunkers. We don't know if we're actually going to replace all 41 bunkers with the Billy bunker system, but some of those bunkers are actually out of play. So, some of those may just be grassed over at this point. We'll just, we may very well do what you're talking about as well, and use them as, you know, and just kind of, let them just kind of go natural, if you will, and that sort of thing. But it won't, we're talking about maybe five bunkers at that level. We'll have to see where we are, but yeah, our intent is probably not ending up at 41 sand bunkers when we're done within the two-year phase.
This is all funded out of the Parks Development Fund as well, so.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
And Municipal Order 2019-226.
Municipal Order approving revisions to the employee medical benefit plan for employees of the City of Bowling Green related to the prescription plan.
Al moved. Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This is a follow-up revision to a recent passage of our health care plan that we need to make, and I'll let Erin Holsey, our HR director, give you a brief overview of what we're doing here.
So, this is a revision of what we talked about about a month ago, and not normally how we would like to proceed with making these changes, but we thought that it was really best for the employees and the communication related to our prescription plan. So, this, what we had put in place might not be going away entirely. As we just got more into it and started talking to more partners and vendors, we found out that there is so much assistance in different programs that we can partner with to solve some of these prescription problems, but it was just getting a little bit too close to that January 1st deadline. And so, what we want to do is spend more of 2020 really evaluating those opportunities and assistance programs so that we can present and communicate something to the employees, possibly next year, when we revisit that. For the time being, we'd like to go back to the flat dollar co-pays, but we are going to keep in place the non-preferred networks that we had already discussed. That's not really affected by this change.
This is only on the pharmacy side?
Correct.
Does it materially change the plans? And if so, are employees going to be given an opportunity to potentially switch plans if it does?
The prescription plan is the same under both plans, so shouldn't really affect the plan that they selected during open enrollment. We did open up an opportunity for people to change their flex dollar contributions, depending on what they thought their prescription costs might be for 2020, and we opened that up. Very few people took advantage of that opportunity to make changes to their flex contributions. I think a few did, but we were pretty flexible with people as we communicated that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-54.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing three acres from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business and RM4 multifamily residential located at zero and 721 Plano Road, presently owned by Stan Dar, with Ben Hansbrough as the applicant.
Al moved. Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Is unanimous recommendation forwarded by planning and zoning. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question. I think this is the first one that I voted on that has the Plano overlay, and so I just wondered if you could give me a brief overview of the specifics around Plano. And then, also, reading in here about the, it's like there's the urban core, and then we have the conservation, it's like part of the county where we want to conserve urban growth. And I was curious if this is a part of the map. I think it's in LU22 in the comprehensive plan on that page regarding how we might want to go about development in that part of the county versus in the urban core.
So, approximately a year, maybe two, process started probably two years ago. We conducted a Plano focal point plan, which focused on that corridor, basically from Scottsville Road all the way out to 240, where the Y is and split. So, part of that, we looked at the future land use map, and we've probably had six meetings or so, six public meetings, and got a lot of public input about Plano. It actually started with a transportation corridor study through the MPO, and one of the outcomes of that was a memorandum of understanding between the city, the county, the planning commission, and the transportation cabinet to identify access. From there, we went and identified specific areas. We basically updated the future land use map for Plano. So, everything, everything in that area basically goes, kind of looks at that Plano plan, those updates and those recommendations. So, that, so with that particular focal point, we looked at all of that first and then see how the rest applies. So, that's kind of how that area plan works for Plano. And then, if you, on page three of 39 of the staff report, you see where those specific policy reviews go through and look at each of those things that are specific to that plan. There appears to be approximately 14 items that were looked at specifically out of that plan, and those would be in addition to all of the rest of the plan. So, probably didn't directly answer your question, so if you have a more specific question?
Yeah, sure. And then, so then, this part was identified as rural village as the future land, so can you describe what future village is and sort of an addendum? And sort of an addendum question to that is I noticed that under rural village, the RM four is not listed as part of what would want to be seventy-five or ninety percent. So just explain sort of how that configures in. If this is the first one, does that mean we, there is no other RM four or how all that percentage is and how we do that work?
This, this particular area was not rural village. The colors are probably a little off when you print. So it's, it was actually a mixed-use commercial. So now understand, understand your question. So since mixed-use commercial allows a mixture of both high-density residential and commercial, so it met the future land use plan. The rural village is, area is pretty much right there at the crossroads of Plano and the county.
And then my other question, it's not, this map is not in this package, but in the comprehensive plan around the conservation.
Conservation.
Some overlay, but it, what is the term?
Yeah, so we, we allow conservation subdivisions. Is that what you're referring to?
No, it's the, it's page LU twenty-two in the comprehensive plan, and it talks about how outside of our urban core, there's other types of things we want to talk about when we are talking about urban growth out into the county and how we want to grow. And so then it talked about different parts are in this sort of conservation area, and then there's the urban core that has a different set. And so I was, I assumed this is in the urban part because it's part of the Plano.
That would be correct, yeah. So essentially, when we did the, the focal point plan, that kind of changed all of that or added to that, further defined that, if you will. So i- if you think of Plano, pretty much north of the natural interchange towards Scottsville Road is pretty much that urban, that urban area. So really, especially that northwest quadrant of, of section one of the plan. So that all is, we asked that question specifically and said, if you, if you had to have apartments and had to have commercial development, where would you want it? And this fell squarely within that, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Comments?
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG two thousand nineteen, fifty-five.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing zero point one-four acre from GB General Business to CB Central Business located at eight seventy-five Broadway Avenue, presently owned by Michael Poston with Mike Cornelius as the applicant.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Beasley Brown. Another unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Ben, can you tell me why the variance of thirteen and a half feet from the required rear yard setback of twenty-five feet from the adjacent single-family residential is needed?
I guess simply they're building the addition they were wanting to add to the back of that building, if you will, require that in order to build that, that size of building.
Which means that the building is going to be that close?
Correct.
To the single-family residential that is behind them? Where we've said that we're going to keep, you know, commercial property at least twenty-five feet from residential property. In this case, we're going to allow thirteen and a half feet?
Thirteen and a half foot variance. So I would have to do, I've got it here somewhere, but it's, so it'd be twenty-five.
So it's even closer?
Yes. Yes, sir.
It's about eleven feet, twelve feet, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Correct.
And is there a justification for that that I missed in the minutes?
So the applicant provided a, an explanation, so it's the applicant's burden of proof, obviously. The application provided a, a explanation on page five of the staff report. Essentially, when you do a variance, you look for a unique circumstance which then might allow the, the reasonable application of that variance. And in this case, it was argued that the lot was much narrower than other lots in that corridor, being only thirty-five foot wide. So that was the, the unique circumstance that, that they provided and the, the board granted.
When we talk about the width of the lot, we're talking about right to left. I don't know if that makes sense.
Got it.
We're talking about.
Frontage.
Indian, yeah, we're talking about road frontage, but actually the variance is.
Right.
From front to back, not right to left.
Yeah, so since the lot is narrower, they don't have as much land to build on.
So they have to go further back.
Right to left, so they have to go front to back.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a follow-up clarification question. So I, I read in the minutes of talking about the, how the alleyway factors into that, but I could not tell from the minutes if it means that the alley is in addition to the twelve and a half feet or is it minus?
Oh, the, the minutes probably didn't reflect this specifically, but the nature of that conversation was specifically the alley being there as another part of that unique circumstance for this property, and the width of that alley provides another ten to twelve feet beyond what that variance was. So it would still be closer to that twenty-five feet if not actually yet, but we're, the, the letter of the law doesn't allow us to count that alley when, when staff looks at it for the ordinance, so that's, that was part of that explanation.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, ordinance, first reading of ordinance BG two thousand nineteen, fifty-six.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing zero point three-eight acre from GB General Business to RM four multifamily residential located at twelve twenty-four and twelve twenty-eight in Danilo Street, presently owned by Choice Rental Properties LLC.
I'll move.
Perrigen. Perrigen, second by Denning. Another recommendation from planning and zoning with eleven yeses and only one no. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Your Honor. Can you explain, Ben, why the flume is being altered in this particular case? Keeping in mind, as I understand it, and I think you've educated me on that there's only three reasons the flume can be amended?
Yeah, so if you look on, again, page two of thirty-two of this staff report, about halfway, kind of stopped at the top, but how about halfway down, you see those three, three items there, LU one-one-four. The applicant addressed that third item, which was that the proposed use is clearly compatible with the existing surrounding development as demonstrated by the applicant. Part of that applicant's argument was that we're not actually adding on to the building. We're just converting the empty basement space to two more apartments. In order for them to do that, they had to amend the, the future land use map to high density to allow them to have that ability to add those two units.
Okay. In two thousand fifteen, the staff report, or the staff report indicated in two thousand fifteen that the site was not developed specifically or accurately in regard to parking and landscaping. How did, how did it, how did that happen?
Well, not to make excuses, but I wasn't here in two thousand fifteen, but I would say there was a period of time where those construction compliance checks that I like to say were not done. And so since that time, a new owner came along, which was the applicant, inherited that violation of the ordinance, if you will, and so this would, would remedy that. How it happens, it simply gets paved and they don't put the landscaping in the way they're supposed to.
And was there anything done about the non-compliance when it was discovered? Or was it discovered through this process?
Discovered through the, it was, actually, I believe it come through code enforcement complaint, and then they chose this process to try to get the extra units and then also come into compliance.
My final question, I think you've already answered. I believe I just understood you to say that this is a different owner than we had in two thousand fifteen, so we're not rewarding, if rewarding's the right word, we're not rewarding bad behavior.
I think that'd be a fair statement.
No further questions?
Please call the roll.
I had a question as well. I'm so sorry. So these basement apartments have not been constructed yet?
That is correct.
Okay, because that was a little bit confusing in the minutes, too. I couldn't tell if everything had already been done, and so they're just wanting to update it so that they can be in compliance or if they will, they're going to build to make it RM four after this.
So I guess the best way to think of it is in two parts. One is to get RM four to be able to convert that basement space into two additional units that do not exist now. And then the second part of it is while they do that, they're going to fix their landscaping and parking to be in compliance with ordinance.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order two thousand nineteen, two twenty-seven.
Municipal order approving a community cat program with the Bowling Green Warren County Humane Society. Second.
So we, we discussed this item a few months ago or maybe several meetings ago, and you all kind of gave direction that you were willing to try this program called the catch-and-release type program. And so what we have before you tonight is just a municipal order approving the trial period between now and June thirtieth of twenty-one that would allow the humane society to take in the cats that are, are either trapped or, or collected and do the spay and neutering on those, identify them with a clip on the ear, and then release them back into the community to where they were picked up or wherever to help control the, the cat population. And if this works, we would come back to you again at the end of the trial period, at the end of June thirtieth of twenty-one, and amend our chapter five animal ordinance to incorporate this program with, with the cats. So I think Gene, Brent, Childers, do y'all have anything to add on this? But this, this leaves chapter five as is, but it gives humane society the green light to start this program and, and give it, give it a try for the next eighteen months and see where, see how it goes.
Question, Ms. Asia sent out some more material to us through, or the same material that we had before for its review, and Tracy is here as well. If y'all have any questions for them.
I see Tracy here. How are you, Tracy? Would it be, would it be okay? I've gotten several emails today just to, just to outline the program one more time and maybe, maybe speak to successes in other communities similar to ours that were modeling this after. I mean, we didn't create this, so we're.
Right, and, and again, it, and a lot of times I think what's happening too, whenever I'm, we sit to handling some of those calls you are getting, it's the community's impression that it's our fault when really we're just trying to help. We were, we received a grant, it gave us an opportunity to start this program in Bowling Green. It's working in Louisville. They changed their ordinances because it's doing such an amazing job there. But basically, what's happening is we have a cat overpopulation problem, we have complaints, we have a scientifically proven way to solve the problem, and, and it's through spay neuter. And since they're feral cats and you can't really walk up to them and pet them and, and eventually bring them in, they have to be trapped. We have a training program for people that are actually feeding these cats because more, there's a lot of people feeding them out of the generous of their heart. And we want to train those people to be colony caregivers versus just feeders, where feeders are just putting food out there. What we're calling the caregivers can look at them and go, okay, this one's sick or this one's not fixed yet or something of that nature. Contact us, let us know that there's an issue, and then we'll set up either a training session or we'll set up some sort of help to get that cat in, get it fixed, and then put it back so it can serve in our community versus being a nuisance or creating more kittens.
We, we don't, we don't want to have feral cats adopted into homes with other pets.
Can't, that would be like trying to adopt a squirrel into a home.
Right, so.
Yeah, they're, feral, feral means wild.
Right.
Yeah.
So I want to, I'm going to get that out there into the atmosphere here so people understand the challenge, that you can't pick up a feral cat, bring it back and put it into the cage and have a family come in and adopt that cat. The only remedy today that we have is euthanization.
Well, there is, a lot of people think that we can put them in barn homes. The issue with putting a city cat in a barn home is they're a city cat, not a bar, not a farm cat. So they're not, they were not raised, they were not trained by their, other cats, and they usually become coyote bait, and farmers don't really like that because it draws coyotes to their farm animals, and that's not really something they're interested in doing because the cats don't know how to stay away from wide-open areas. For example, the reason why we have white squirrels in the city and not so much in the county is because there's so much of a population in the trees, so a lot of the predators are not coming in here and can't see them as well. A lot of city cats, you'll notice, are lighter colors because it's easier, they're, they don't have those predators like they have in the farms. So it's, and then trying to find a farmer that will take one because of the coyote issues, it's kind of hard. They prefer to have farm-raised cats because it, because they're wiser in the farm.
I know this is going to be a hard question.
It's okay.
And if you can't say it, don't. I'm, I'm just wondering, what, what is the population of feral cats? Can you estimate?
There is no way. Considering one cat, one kitten, before she's eighteen months old, can be a mother, a grandmother and a great-grandmother with her and her offspring in eighteen months producing a hundred and ninety-five cat kittens, it's really hard to say how many of those are not surviving, how many of those are, are surviving, how many of those got killed by something or ran over or some, anything that could possibly happen. It would be so hard to do that. We call that cat math at the shelter. It's the worst, it's the hardest math you'll ever do.
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
Because they, because they can, they can get pregnant four times a year, they can get pregnant starting at four months old, and they can have four litters a year.
You're, you're proposing to spay neuter them, clip their ear that tells others that they are spayed neutered and bring them back to where they came from.
Right, and you can see from afar if that one's fixed or not, or if you accidentally catch it in a trap, like it, because it just went in because there's food in there, then you can just turn it loose and so there's no extra resources wasted.
I appreciate the explanations, and I just want the general population to understand that we're trying to fix a problem, not create one.
And another thing that, like, some people are like, oh, clipping the ears. It's very similar to getting a cartilage pierce, it's just a little snip off the top. It's not that much. We haven't noticed any of them complaining whenever they're in our care for two days.
I know we have a model humane society here.
Oh, thank you.
And you serve as the, as the training ground for many, many others across the state.
Yes.
And I want to commend you for that and say thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that.
You're the animal lover, and you know, what, what we're trying to do here is to, is to help and not, not create any issues. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Do, any other questions?
Tracy, I know, oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
So the number we take in actually is going to be the number that is turned back out, except they can't have kittens.
It would not turn out something that's suffering or something that we couldn't fix. Like, for instance, if one of them has a rotten tooth, we might pull that, but if it's suffering from liver failure or it's got a really bad eye infection or something, we would probably have to euthanize one that is not something that we can treat. So we would not release that. If we catch something that we feel like, like, for instance, a farmer has put in an order and they'd like to have some, we may keep them for that reason, but if it's healthy and it's happy and it's clear that this cat is sur, is surviving with resources because its body score is good, then we would release that cat.
So if a neighborhood is having cat problems and we pick up the cats, we're not going to take the cats back to that same neighborhood already.
Okay, what would be the problem? Because what I would be interested in is figuring out what the problem is and then problem-solving it, because the three problems that we've had over the past almost a year are they smell, there's too many, and they're destructive. We have resources to fix all three of those problems, and it's all through the spay neuter, and then we have deterrence that can keep them from, like, for instance, getting into their flower beds or something of that nature.
I've been involved with cat problems that, what's the home park here by Warren Central?
Skyline?
Yes, Skyline, on more than one occasion. That's a situation to where they don't want the cats back regardless of whether they can have more kittens or not. They don't want the number that was taken away to come back.
Right, and, and I went to that park and I try, I sat down there, I listened to the man yell at me. I tried to resolve this issue for him, and he wasn't open-minded enough to allow me to fix it, so I, I don't know how to help somebody that doesn't want me on their property to fix it. But I will tell you, Animal Control told me that they have a resident there that only likes kittens, so every time he sees free kittens on Facebook, he goes and gets them. When they're not kittens anymore, he literally turns them loose in his neighborhood. He doesn't do anything with them, and he doesn't like to spay neuter them, but he only likes kittens. So they're always going to have a, have a problem as long as they're allowing their residents to do that, and I tried to help them and they weren't interested. Maybe you could encourage them and I'd be more than happy to try again.
There are some people out there that don't like kittens, they don't want them around.
And we can put deterrence in their yard, and it only takes a cat about three times because they're super smart to hear that deterrent and then they won't come back. And what it is, it's like a little something that you put in their yard, and it's only a sound that a cat. a sound that cats can hear, and because they're very cautious, they will not go back into that area for fear something will happen to them. So, we can, we can actually, anybody that has property, we can actually allow them to borrow a deterrent, and that would help solve that problem for them.
I'd also add, just based upon what I've read, that by taking the cat away, we're not ultimately, I mean, I understand what Skyline's concern is, but removing the cats that they have on premise today is only going to bring, in a strange way, you have to understand the science behind it, but it's only going to bring more cats back to the property.
Right. It's what we call the vacuum effect. For example, whenever you take some, let's say, a lion was drinking water, certainly a zebra's not going to walk up next to that lion, but when the lion leaves, then the zebra, the giraffe, and it's going to come because that predator's not there. When you take the cats away, the rats come. When you put rats and mice come into that area, then snakes see that as a food resource, and they're going to come in. Not to mention, you're never going to convince Bowling Green to not get a cat. So, there's always going to be someone, and because they can't afford to fix it, or they just choose not to, or they're just not aware that that's something that needs to be done, and that cat starts spraying or yowling or just determined to get out, and you try to leave for work and it scoots out between your legs, that cat's now outbreeding with the other cat. And because they can smell a cat from up to three miles away that's in heat, they're going to travel, so you're always going to have one. And Skyline right now has a big problem because they're not interested in allowing us to go in and spay neuter, so they have sprayed, and so cats from up to three miles away are seeing this as a great resource because they're the biggest, one of the bigger trailer parks, so they've got a lot of people feeding there.
Go right ahead, and show.
But there is, if I understand it right, only one person in that park that is creating that problem.
Animal Control told me about that one person. However, to believe that a trailer park of that size only has one person that has a cat that's not fixed is kind of unreasonable. There, I'm sure there are several people that can afford, because even though we offer it for around fifty dollars, fifty dollars is sometimes a lot of money for some families that are trying to discern, "Do I feed my kids, do I buy Christmas presents, or do I get my cat fixed?" So, it usually becomes the lowest of the priority. With this grant, we are offering ten-dollar spay neuters, but then there's the transportation, getting there when we're open, and there's always some sort of barrier that they may have. Regardless, we would love to go in and give out flyers and talk to the residents and start solving these problems, and we are offering to fix every cat that they have for free, but again, the property owner is not interested in having us come in.
Well, we're talking about the same person.
Skyline.
Yes, and I certainly don't like the way he has treated our people that has gone out there.
Yeah, I don't like the way he treats me either.
And I've asked in the past what we could do as far as the court system, anything to take care of the problem, because it is a problem. And it's unfortunate that the trailer park doesn't take the interest in trying to assist the city in ridding the problem. I don't care whether it's cats, dogs, or whatever, it's a problem. And people called us, the five of us, about the problem, and it's something that we need to take care of.
I would say the next time he calls you, say, "We have a scientifically proven way to fix the problem, and if you're interested in complaining, let us help you," or, there's nothing, I mean, handle it on your own. Because that's what I told him, I said, "I can come in and help you, or you can handle this, but we're not interested in killing cats, we're interested in solving a problem."
I have not talked to that individual.
Okay.
Probably wouldn't be interested in talking to her, but I am interested in our people and the safety of our people when they go out there. You know, I'm OX policeman and...
One final question. I know that cat math is hard, but would you say in general terms that our feral cat program, lack of program, our feral cat population in the city of Bowling Green has grown larger over the last fifteen, ten, twenty years?
Our intakes from the city grows every year for obvious reasons, because they're not fixed and they just keep making babies.
And so, then, I guess that's where my support falls down, that if what we were doing, doing now, was working, we should see a decrease in that population.
And I can tell you that's the truth, because we started in Northbrook, and we were having a lot of intakes from them, and we're not having any now.
Again, I want to finish, that if it were working, we would see a decrease in the population.
Yes.
And that's not what's happening, so we need to look at something different.
Correct.
And this is the something different we're looking at.
And we know it works. It's scientifically proven to work, and we didn't even have to do the research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we return the cats back out, I realize they can't have kittens and so on, but are they still dangerous as far as, excuse me, attacking people or whatever?
No, cats are very fearful. It's kind of like a squirrel. They're very similar to thinking of a squirrel. They do not have any interest in being anywhere close to a person. They try, they stay far away, but they're really nocturnal. They sleep a lot of times during the day, and they like to hunt at night. It's, if they're out, it's because they need to, because they're nursing, or because they're in heat, or because they're looking for, to find that odor.
And if a cat is aggressive, it generally means that the cat is ill, and you've already explained that if the cat is ill, you're not going to return it.
If it's aggressive, it's because somebody's trapped it. It's not, it doesn't come up to you aggressive, that's not a cat's nature.
No rabies?
Well, cats can conduct rabies, but we haven't had any cases in Kentucky. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't think there has been a cat.
Yeah, in years, I mean...
But part of what TFR is, it's to vaccinate all of those cats who are infected.
Come on up to the microphone. I can't hear you anymore.
Microphone. One of the integral parts of trap-neuter, vaccinate-return, we like to emphasize that V in there because every cat gets vaccinated. Public safety is our number-one concern, even though I work for Best Friends Animal Society. We protect and help companion animals, but public safety is number-one, and by vaccinating those cats and putting them back, that helps public health and safety.
So, obviously, we have lots of animal lovers in Bowling Green, and some of the questions that I've had from citizens are those who don't have cats, but others support animals, and they feel like cats threaten those pets that they have. And so, they're sort of talking about, are we choosing cats over other animals that might be prey for cats? So, can you talk about, in terms of this type of program, is it also mutually beneficial to just animals in general in terms of cats?
To better understand your question, they're concerned, they think we're putting cats at a priority over, I don't understand how they think they're a threat. What do you mean?
So, I guess feral cats who might be hunting pets of theirs?
Unless they have a pet rat running around in the yard, I don't know that they would hunt, or a bird loose or something. They wouldn't, they don't hunt other cats, and they don't hunt dogs unless they're hunting for a mate. That would be the only reason. I mean, if obviously not going to attack that.
Let's call the rule.
Esley Brown. Yes. Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Thank y'all for coming in, we appreciate it, and it was a long meeting for you. Second reading of ordinance BG 2019-52.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 0.54 acre from CB Central Business and OPR, Office Professional Residential to GB General Business, located at Zero Chestnut Street, presently owned by Dean Warren, with Trident Properties of Bowling Green LLC, care of Mitch Wright as contract vendor.
Motion by Paragon.
Second by Nash. Second reading of unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Are there any further comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Ben, approach the bench, please.
Yes, sir.
If you would, just for the record, explain to me or to the audience the zero Chestnut Street, street number, and what direction you're going in there.
So, in relation to just addressing in general, when there's a vacant lot with no structure on it, it is given an address of zero, so 911 can realize there's no structures on that particular lot. If a call comes in with a number, an actual address assigned, then they know there's a structure on that particular lot, so it's just an easy way to do that, and it's the same, that's the same way it's addressed throughout Warren County.
This project is going to be in the 800 block, right at Eighth and Main Street. Where will the ingress and egress be for this project?
So, the main access will be off of Chestnut Street, but they will also have access off of Spring Alley, so it kind of goes through, but their main access will be off of Chestnut Street.
How far is that exit and entrance from the stoplight at Main Street? Just an estimate.
Hmm. Yeah, let's see, close, I'm going to say somewhere around eighty feet. Essentially, I think it's the existing, if I remember correctly, it's existing entrance. Let me switch to the aerial here. Yes, they'd be utilizing one of the existing entrances off of Chestnut.
How many automobiles do you have planned for the parking?
So, there'll be sixteen spaces in their new parking lot, and that's in addition to the parking, that's kind of that house-shaped parking lot for what will be a remainder of Mr. Warren's, Dean Warren's parking. So, it'll be sixteen just for the new building.
I'm looking at Spring Alley there, and of course, he shouldn't have any problem coming out on that street. That's all I've got for now.
Motion.
Esley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, and second reading of ordinance BG 2019-53.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations and Chapter 22 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ord ordinances.
Motion.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash. Second reading of an item that we had presented last week. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the rule.
Esley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Next, we have public comments, those who have signed in. John Conley, I believe you're first.
My name is John Conley. I live at 10th and Park here in Bowling Green, just a few blocks away from the proposed development in the Kenton neighborhood that this board approved on November 5th and to which I'm here to speak today. I'm speaking from a written statement that I would like to be put into the record. From Jonesville to the Shake Rag, our city has a long history of disregarding the lives of poor and low-wealth residents, especially African-Americans. By allowing storage garages in the middle of an African-American residential neighborhood, the Kenton Plan threatens to repeat this terrible history. I urge the Board of Commissioners to rescind its approval of the rezoning, to temporarily halt any action by the developers, CSR, BG Investments, and to hold a new public hearing on this most pressing matter for our city. Members of this board have cited the "great wait" lent to the decision of the Planning Commission in zoning matters. However, in this case, the Planning Commission approved a request that its own staff flagged with no less than sixteen areas of noncompliance with the city's comprehensive plan. And keep in mind, this was far from a usual request to begin with. In the September 19th Planning Commission meeting, Executive Director Ben Peterson said that a request was "pre-app date on March 7th, 2019, as ordered to develop contractor garages on the property." Commissioners, this is not true. In an open records request, I learned that while there was a pre-application filed on that date, it was mostly left blank, and the proposed zoning was marked with a question mark. The application was then amended after the fact, at least twice, to retrofit the developer's plans. I raise this issue because if more real folks had a chance to consider the developer's actual plans, many more could have voiced opposition. And though Mr. Peterson told this board otherwise, some residents did voice their opposition to the Planning Commission, perhaps most notably Anthony Monroe of 1027 Greenwood Alley, who simply asked, "My main concern is, where am I going to go? I mean, what's going to happen to me?" End quote. At the meeting, Mr. Monroe's comments were met with a long silence as everyone slowly realized who was speaking, namely, a resident who stands to experience homelessness as a result of this decision. After clarifying this fact, Chairman Runner said, "That is not a question that I would be able to answer." So, to recap, a resident of our city raises his concerns to the Planning Commission, and he is met with literally no response. And then, to add insult to injury, his and other residents' concerns are erased in Mr. Peterson's presentation of the matter to you, the Board of Commissioners. So, my question for you is this: Why should such wait go to a committee that failed to do its job with any integrity? Why not listen to the voices of residents who stand to meet adversely affected by this development? As you all know, I'm sure, a guiding principle of the city's comprehensive plan is to strengthen...
Mr. Conley, your time has expired.
One more sentence, please, Mayor.
No, sir, we'll accept your written comments, and we'll be happy to take a look at them after the record.
You don't have time for one more sentence, please, Mayor.
We use a three-minute limit here, please, sir, and if I make an exception for you, then it has to go to everyone, so if you leave your comments, we'll have those for the record. Next up is Sherlisa Arnold.
Good evening. My name's Sherlisa. So, I've been a Bowling Green resident for over seventeen years. I currently live downtown in Bowling Green on Indianola, which is just one street over from Kenton, where previously this commission has voted to turn homes into a contractor's garage. I'm here to firmly and politely ask for you all to reconsider this decision. It is my understanding that this decision was made without any consideration of what the Bowling Green residents need or want. I know this because before, during, and after this decision was made, I've spent my time working with a local community action group, going door-to-door, and asking downtown Bowling Green residents exactly what they believe is needed when it comes to development of the area. Some mentioned wanting better access to grocery stores, healthcare facilities, parks, public transportation, stops, and affordable housing instead of high-rise penthouses that are being built downtown. All of the residents provided valid reasoning for why these things are needed and how they can benefit the community. None, I repeat, none of the hundred doors I knocked on mentioned destroying homes and forcing Bowling Green residents to relocate for contractors. While I see the possibility that perhaps these contractors may be working to achieve some of the requests of the public, I also recognize that unlike this commission, these contractors will be working for private owners, who I cannot expect to have the residents of Bowling Green's best interest in mind. I urge the City Commission to remember exactly who it is they represent, the people living on Kenton, Indianola, downtown, and all of Bowling Green. The decision needs to be reconsidered with the best interests of the people living in Bowling Green in mind. I ask humbly as a citizen of this great city, thank you, and have a blessed night.
Arnold, last individual, have them on our list. Our next scheduled meeting is January 7th, 2020, so we want to wish you a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. So we want to wish you a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas.